Okay, at six thirty we'll get started for Planning and Zoning Commission. If you would call the, uh, roll call please.
Megan. Brian. Brooks.
Here.
Rob. Alyssa. Michael. Barb.
Here. Okay, we've got a quorum. We'll go ahead and look at the agenda. Any changes or else you entertain a motion?
Motion to approve, no.
Tote second.
We've got a motion and second to approve the agenda, all in favor? Post? Okay. We take a look at the minutes. Alyssa, you're my go-to person. Did you see anything?
Tote second.
Got a motion and second to approve the minutes of November seventh, all in favor? Post? Now's the time for public comments. If there's anyone here that would like to address the commission on any item on the agenda or not on the agenda? Anybody for public comments? We like silence Glenn, it's okay. Alright, we're moving on to a public hearing for sign regulations.
So this is the text that was inspired by a conversation with Hockey about their new building down in Aspen Park. We talked about it for a month or two institutional district signs. What is in the packet is what we came up with, but it is my understanding that Mr. Hydrink has some additional considerations to add.
Yeah, so I emailed, I emailed Patrick this morning with just a couple of comments. Mostly related to, I think what we, what's in the draft right now is only for two sides of the building. But I think for the types of facilities that are gonna be built on, sorry, the types of buildings that are gonna be built on, institutional properties, um, schools, churches, particularly, that they're gonna want some form of signage on multiple sides of their buildings. You know, if you look at the high school, for example, I think they got the main identification signage. I think they got an administrative entrance signage. I think they have theater entrance signage. I think they have, I think they have signage on all four sides. You know, you think about the stadium, same thing. There's probably multiple signages there between concession stands and entrance points and tickets and whatnot. Churches, especially if they have an educational function, they may have some signage on at multiple entrance points. And so, um, I guess what I was suggesting is that we just remove the two sides. Allow them to put signage on all four sides, but still keep the four hundred total max and the two hundred on any, any individual side intact. So just strike that sentence, but say it's two sides. And then, an applicant would have the choi- or a building owner would have the choice of basically still going to, if they were to do the max of two hundred, they'd still be limited to two sides because of the four hundred maximum. Or they could choose to do smaller sides and divide it up between more sides of the building, okay. Do we wanna, I mean, I'm just thinking, do we want even be four? Cause a building could have more than four sides. Could be like a forty-five on it. Have a door on, is that, are you considering that a side? Another side, or is that? I don't know how you would look at that.
We'd probably have to define side of building.
If, I mean, if the, on, under that part of it, that is gonna be limited by the size of that side too. So if it's a, you know, you got a small side, it's a twenty-foot long side, that's gonna have a pretty small sign. You know?
Like it'd probably be a door entrance is what I'm thinking.
Which, I don't, do, do signage like that, does that count for your square footage? Like a, an entrance sign or directional sign, does that count? I was thinking that that, like a entrance A wouldn't necessarily count under the...
We do have some exceptions for public safety signs and directional signs and that kind of thing, just because you would eat up. Your signage, real quick on just doing basic legal requirements.
Entrance exit type.
Uh, but definitely like the small free setting signs to get someone into a facility and out, we don't count those.
Right.
Really just the logo, the name brand of the company.
More advertisement type things, so. So I, I think that if we took out that, uh, last sentence, the verbiage in there is gonna limit, so we're not gonna have a, a twenty-foot long side of a building, a little nook or something that's gonna have a four-foot, you know, sign on it. So I think that verbiage in itself, cause we're talking about large buildings before you even get to that. If you have a a hundred-foot long side of a building, however many sides, if it's a Pentagon or whatever, that's gonna be a big enough building that a two-hundred square foot sign isn't going to be overwhelming, I don't think. So I think if we take that out, we should be fine. I don't think we're gonna, cause what, what we're concerned with is overwhelming something, you know? So I, I don't think we need to add something in about how many sides or whatever, cause the other verbiage is gonna limit the, the size of the sign anyway, if it's a smaller side.
So is this, is this gonna take care of their concern that the sign is too small on that big of a building? Are we allowing bigger for them? I mean, by this, the way this is written? Cause that was the concern, right?
I guess my only other concern would be is if we're in a situation where they have, which I don't know why they would, but if they had a s- big sign that was facing residential, but I mean, if they're trying to advertise something, you don't wanna advertise it to where the people are at, so I don't know why they'd do that, but if you had a big sign that was just facing residential, that was a little bit obnoxious would be my only concern, but with setbacks or anything else, I, I don't know how potential that would be.
I think for the most part, we're probably gonna be okay, you know, in these types of applications. Anything that's large is, you know, promotional type signage is gonna be facing a street frontage. Um, I don't think it's gonna be facing residential neighborhood or anything like that. You know, you might have some small identification signage for people that are on the site, but I think the, the majority of the, of the signage that would maybe be, you know, um, a hindrance to residential is not gonna be facing residential unless it's all the way across the street, so.
When someone chooses between A1 or A2, do they get, do we say, you know, we pick one or pick two? Whichever is larger, or do they just pick which, the one they like the best?
I think that would be up the, up to the applicant, and under two, you just have the benefit of being able to scale the size of your sign. So, under one, you'd be limited to the maximum that we currently have. That's more of what we currently have. The, the two just allows you to get a, get more square footage of sign if your building allows it. So it's, it's kind of up to the applicant. I don't think we would dictate that they have to do one or the other. But under two, you'd be able to. I don't know that there'd be a reason why we, we would wanna dictate which one they use.
I don't think, the way it's written right now, if they wanna do option one, we're not limiting them to one side, two sides, three sides, four sides. They could, they could put, you know, fifty square feet on all four sides of their building if they wanted.
I'm in favor of your suggestion to take out the the sentence that said that limits it to two sides of the building. That sounds like a good idea. Funny, we didn't think of that sooner.
Is there anyone in the audience that wants to address this particular sign regulations? So if we make that change, Patrick, does it have to come back again?
Not unless you want it to. You could push it forward to city council for their public hearing with that change. If the city council made a change at their public hearing, then it would come back to you all first.
Will you remind me? Planning and zoning does one public hearing and council will do how many, one or two?
Council does one. They do a first reading, public hearing usually, then there's a second reading when they vote. Should it pass, then it gets published in the newspaper. Then twenty days from the day it appears in the newspaper, it becomes effective. Assuming no one refers to a vote.
So there'll be two more public hearings on it, so. If we make it go forward, I think that's a lot of opportunity for public to weigh in on, on it if they want.
Alright, I'll, I'll make a motion. Hydrink here, um, to recommend the city council um, with the correction to delete the last sentence in, um, paragraph one, uh, paragraph two, sorry.
Tote second.
Okay, we've got a motion and second to refer this, uh, as a recommendation to city council, all in favor? Post? Alright. Okay, next we have a public hearing on drive-through service facilities.
Yep, so this is also what we worked on for a little bit, trying to set some ground rules at the base level for drive-through facilities. Currently, the way the ordinance language is structured is it adds drive-through service facilities as a conditional use in general business, neighborhood business, and central business. And it sets some base regulations where the big one is you would be able to set the number of stacking spaces at the time depending on what the specific business is. And then it adds some definitions. So Mr. Hydrink also had some suggestions on this one.
Yeah, so the, the first item there is just some wordsmithing, um, so in the right hand, in the left-hand column and in our definition, it talks about drive-through service facility. But then in the right half, right-hand column, we say drive-through service window. And I'm just sug- suggesting we change window to facility to keep everything consistent and also aligned with, with the, the technical definition. And then my second suggestion, we do allow, um, retail trade or services to be permitted in LI and HI districts. We also allow service stations, you know, gasoline service stations to be located in LI and HI. And those could have a drive-through component if they have a, uh, you know, some food associated with those. Like a Dairy Queen or something inside of a, a QuickTrip or something. They could have a drive-through, drive-through window. And then we also allow, um, vehicle washing facilities in light industrial and heavy industrial districts. And, uh, those would probably fall under our definition of a, uh, drive-through service facility if they are a paid, you know, if they were public type use, where someone pulls up, has to select a wash type, make payment, and then wait for the next car to leave. And so those would also be considered a, a drive-through service facility, so I was just thinking we should also include the light industrial and heavy industrial districts as part of this change.
For the industrial, is that, and maybe you said that and I, I was reading, I can't read and listen very well at the same time, apologize, but um, is that only for customers, like a, a place that's open to the public, not like, um, cause I'm trying to think of like, you had a, a scale or something like that, that you might have some kind of a window, but you don't need to have stacking for all that, but for like a car wash that's open to public, is there a way to define that? Cause you wouldn't want necessarily every...
You prob- you probably would want every car wash now to be a conditional use. It does say as part of the drive-through service facility definition that it's a designated area to facilitate the movement of its customers' motor vehicles. So it would, it, they would have to be a customer instead of, if you you have a truck wash as a, so you say engineer trust for whatever reason, one has had a truck wash for their trucks that haul the lumber. The, the trucks hauling the lumber wouldn't be their customers, so they wouldn't.
Yep, as long as there's something, I'm just kinda thinking that we could open up a can of worms that we weren't ready for, but, okay.
Well, and I think, you know, all of these, you know, it still comes here as a conditional use, so it would be just a matter of, you know, do we see, do we see any potential issues? You know, for example, if, if somebody was to put in a, um, a tractor-trailer truck wash, um, you know, like, uh, you know, Rentschler's has one, the old Rentschler's place, they have one. If they were to do something like that, obviously it would come here and we would say, well, in that instance, the twenty-foot, the twenty-foot, um, staging size is too small, cause it should be a large for a tractor-trailer, so.
Is there anyone here from the public that would like to address this? Public hearing?
So I guess, um, from a kind of a legal standpoint, if we, if we add the LI and HI component to what's been publicly put out there, would we have to allow people to come back and address that? Cause that's, that's kind of a bigger change.
Uh, my understanding is the current way the Supreme Court has viewed that is they've addressed it at, if in the, if a change is made at the city council public hearing, they have not at Planning and Zoning. Conceptually, if a change is made at the city council public hearing, Planning and Zoning would not have had an opportunity to weigh in on that change. But if you all did it, everyone still checked the box. So I don't believe that, I, I think it could still go forward if you proposed the changes now.
I have no objections to your suggestions.
If for some reason my understanding is incorrect, we will postpone until we can re-review.
I'll make a motion to approve with the changes.
Tote second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to, um, make the changes to drive-through service facilities, all in favor? Post? Alright. Two down, Patrick, two to go.
So this next one stems from the conversation we had with the developer of Aspen Ridge. They went through for the conditional use permit for the multifamily because this language was not yet in the code. What they wanna do is basically some lots with five townhouses on them and then they would subdivide. Currently, we have single-family attached up to four, five. And then we have, it, that can be surrounded by commonly-owned spaces permitted. Then at, under conditional uses, we would have this if they're independently owned, surrounded by common space or multifamily. We just wouldn't have a way for them to subdivide each having its own lot. So this is what that proposes to do.
So I kinda had a thought on this the other day too, um, as we're entering that time of year when we're talking about snow. Uh, we were talking about Aspen Ridge and that, that street issue, and we kinda were talking about snow. It kinda, all kinda came together, but if they were all, if it was a single plat, one owner, eight units, snow removal's gonna be taken care of by the owner. If we have individual plats with eight different owners, my concern is how does that, what's that middle, those middle units, how do they take care of snow? Where do they put that? Is there a way that we can require that there's an HOA? To, to handle snow removal, or how do we make sure that those middle lots have a place to put snow without it being a a war or two every time it snows? Is there a way to handle that? I, I, what I'm thinking is maybe there's a reason why it originally wasn't allowed to have individually-platted lots, maybe there was a, a thought in that. It was kinda my hesitation here. Because I just don't know what those middle people would do with their snow.
I do not have an answer off the top of my head whether we could force them to set up an HOA. My guess is no, but I do not have a good answer for you on that.
Is there anyone here that would like to address this issue?
I just think it gets into a like a logistically, I don't know I don't know how you, cause you can't, by ordinance, you can't put your snow onto somebody else's property. And...
You also can't just push it out into the street.
You can't push it into the street. Um, I just think it, it gets to a situation where you have somebody that's not able to maintain their property when they're individually-platted versus one owner.
Are those, those are private streets, right? That they're gonna face now?
I believe so. I think the, the internal ones there would be private. I think that was Russ's intention. I don't wanna speak for him, but that's what comes to mind. The, the main through streets would be city, but those would be...
It seemed like those were gonna be private, how I understood it.
So based on that, I might, my imagine is Ru- my, I imagine Russ doesn't probably just wanna own the streets, you know, in perpetuity. That would probably be an HOA that once all those lots are sold, would manage that, I'm guessing, but that would probably be more of a question for Russ.
And that's a singular situation too, where we're allowing a potential that wouldn't be HOA or, you know, that's I, I, I can see how it could work. I can see how you could have an HOA and, and, um, it could work, but I, I think that if we can't force an HOA, I think we're we're in a situation that it couldn't work.
Along those same lines, um, how do we, how do we address the property width in a situation like this?
Each of the properties that are created through the subdivision would have to meet the minimum frontage and size. So they would they would need to be fifty feet wide, minimum. I'm finding it, we're getting there. Um, they would likely have to be the twenty-five feet.
Are we R2 or R3?
R2. So single-family attached itself right now is twenty-five feet, single-family attached, the individual-planted lots. So they would each have to be twenty-five, and we have had conversations with Russ, so he is aware of that. Whether twenty-five is the right number, if that's a little small in that situation, that's up to you all, but it's twenty-five, Russ is aware that each lot would have to meet that.
Yeah, so if they have a, a twenty-foot wide garage, they would have, they would only have five feet, but still have to get access to their front door. It's a lot of snow to pack up in five feet, cause you also gotta find a place to put the snow coming from the street.
But if it's a private street, then they're going to have to maintain the street, right?
The developer, until, until all the lots are sold, I imagine then it would be an HOA. I, I assume Russ's group doesn't wanna just own the streets without any of the benefit, so.
Another question, I'll think of that. Has there ever been a time where a private street has went back to the city's, uh, maintenance? I mean, I don't know if it's happened in Brandon, but I was just thinking that too, if, what if they all of a sudden go, we don't want this anymore? Can the city take it over?
Uh, uh, if, I don't wanna speak for Tammy either since she's not here, but part of the arrangement is that if you set up a private street that does not meet our city standards in terms of widths or materials or anything else, we will not take it. You would have to improve it to our standard for us to take it.
Cause there was some big discussion about the a- the alleyways and tall grass. I think they wanted us to take them back, but I don't know that we did.
Two of the alleys are, are owned by the city, but when they plow them, they assess the homeowners. And then one of the alleys, uh, the city vacated to the homeowners and we bought some from Metcalf, anyway, that kinda thing. But anyway, two of the alleys are still owned by the city, but they don't maintain them. Cause they don't meet the set, the standards.
I think that's a, a valid issue. That we really should address somehow.
Do we need to have, um, Russ come in at the next meeting, or what are we thinking?
So your options kinda here are you can recommend the city council, you can recommend they don't approve it, you can table the public hearing for further discussion, so you have a couple of options. You postpone it, whatever the Robert Rutherford order term is to move it to a meeting of a definite date and time.
But if we tell the city council to not, that we don't recommend it, then do we have that whole waiting period again?
If they agreed, I guess, they could they could probably still pass it against our recommendation and then, but, um, but it would end this, okay. So we could address other things if, if, if this is an intended use that we've discussed. We could still address other items in the future pertaining these properties, right?
The text, the six-month period does not apply on the text amendments that we're working through. That would apply to somebody's conditional use permit or variance or whatever. We could discuss this issue every month if we wanted to.
Cause this isn't pertaining to a, a specific site. This is a change in the ordinance.
Correct.
The zoning, so.
Yes, it would apply to potentially all our two properties in town.
So we could table it to a specific date if we wanted more information, is what you're saying?
Or if you wanted to think about it some more, or before you made a recommendation one way or the other.
I guess I don't necessarily have a problem with tabling it. I just don't know logistically how if you have a twenty-five-foot wide lot, you move your snow anywhere, cause you can't move it to your neighbor, you can't move it to the street, and we get snow, so I don't, I don't see... That creates another obstacle for parking. Where are these people gonna park, cause they can't get their garage? I, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk through this a little bit, do the discussion at the same time. I, I think I'm gonna make a motion to deny and let city council discuss it too. That moves it along. I don't see an option. If, if there is an option that comes along, someone can bring it to city council. I'm not kicking the can. I, I just I think that that will there's, the discussion isn't over. They still have an opportunity to go to city council. But I don't see a way for it to work. So instead of tabling it, um, I think that's, that's my thinking, that there's still opportunity to discuss... that's, that's my thinking, that there's still opportunity to discuss it if someone comes up with something great. Um, I just don't see I don't, I don't see logistically how, how it'd function, so I'm gonna make a motion to recommend to city council to deny. Could we, I don't know, can we still discuss this? Could we provide allowable widths of the driveway? You know, to say, in this situation, the driveway has to be can only be fifty percent of the lot width. So if they wanna put in a, a, a double-wide driveway, they would have to put in a, a wider, they would have to provide a wider lot. To allow enough side yard for, for that snow to be placed.
I imagine so. We'd have to figure out the logistics of it, because we have set various driveway widths based on districts. We'd have to come up with some kind of exception for this particular use in this particular district.
I'd like to see us bring in Russ and just see, and have him address that issue, Mike. Sending it to city council, I mean, if you tell them to deny it, they probably will, but this is way too technical, I think, for us to discuss it reasonably at a city council level. I mean, you guys are way ahead of us on this stuff. So to get anything to come out of there, I don't think that's gonna happen. Not to minimize what we do, but I mean.
And if we were to discuss other options, I mean, that wouldn't be here, this is amending the use itself, that, that would be in other sections, right? Likely?
Likely in probably the off-street parking section.
So the question tonight, we have a motion, I guess, but the question tonight is whether you think that it's, concerns are valid enough that this shouldn't exist and shouldn't be added as a potential.
Can I remove my motion?
So we, we could table this until we, until we figure out the logistics.
Correct.
So, do these units have no front yard at all? No front yard whatsoever?
They wouldn't have to. You can have a, there's lots of townhouses that are the interior units.
Brick apartments over at the end of Holly. Yeah? The blues are driveway. Okay. So they have, they'd have to move it around to the, their, they'd have to move their their, um, they'd have to move their driveway snow round to the backside. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a really good point, and they may not have thought of it. The developer may not have thought of it.
Helps me think about it, to be able to see that. Thanks.
Okay, so we have pulled the motion, correct, and we're going to table it until our next meeting?
You would need a motion to table to a date and a time.
All right. And you wanna sp- specify a time?
I mean, it would just be generally probably six thirty at PM at whatever. Next, the next rightfully scheduled meeting is December fifth. After that, we get into December nineteenth.
I'd break, I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to table this, uh, public hearing on R two zoning, all in favor?
Do we have a date we're tabling it to?
Oh, let's do it till the fifth. You want the fifth? Okay?
I'll reach out to Russ.
Okay, all in favor? Posed? Yep. And that's why we have discussions, right? Okay. Public hearing on fence regulations. How many times have we talked about fences?
Probably too many. But, so hopefully this one's a little bit more, goes a little bit more smoothly. This is one we talked about where the city engineer would like the existing last sentence of fifteen fifteen six M removed. So this draft reflects it without the prohibition on no fences in twenty-foot drainage use. This is what was, you all seem to agree to. But Tammy is of course not here to talk about it, but this is seemingly what we discussed.
And is there any public comment on this one? Fences in the drainage way?
I'll make a motion, recommend to city council. That's it.
Totally second.
Okay, any more discussion on this one? It seems pretty straightforward. Okay, all in favor? Posed? All right, moving on to discussion items, Patrick.
So what is new in, in the packet and on your desktop in the folder is in the packet, I looked around for Sioux Falls, there's Watertown, there's a couple other examples. Kind of the big takeaway is everyone does things a little bit differently, depending on what their preference is. So Jonah from Elevated Towers also provided some information that is in your packet. It's additional examples, it kinda looks like an email with a couple examples around town. He found some examples, and last time we had met, we talked about Ben Rifle Middle School has one. So I tried to find a time where I could get out there when school wasn't in session, because no one wants a guy out there taking pictures with a bunch of kids around. So I tried to find a time where it was still light outside and there wasn't a whole lot of things around. So there are a couple of pictures in there from the towers kinda in the middle, and you can see how kinda close it is to the school. There are houses being built on the other side, so you can see where the tower is in relation to the home construction. So that, those are the most recent updates in your packet.
What page? I, I didn't catch the photos where, where are those?
So the photos and the additional information is in the P and Z folder on your desktop. So the packet is just kind of the town examples that I found. So just quick mini Haha County GIS-ing the measurement. The tower was probably a hundred and ten, hundred and twenty-five-ish feet from where the homes would be constructed, so it's pretty close. I didn't measure it to the school, one twenty-five or so too, probably about the same, so. Oh, probably a little closer than most people would probably have at least the past standards where, you know, towers had to be, you know, way far away from everything. Probably a little closer than historic, but that may be the trend now. So Jonah is also here to discuss.
Turned on. Um, Jonah Snyder, um, business address is forty-three hundred North Northview Avenue in Sioux Falls. Yeah, I tried to find some good examples that are pretty much all on the east side of Sioux Falls. They kind of are, are the same tower type that we're talking about, a monopole tower that are within close proximity to houses and residential districts. Um, so there's four or five of them there. Essentially, they're all examples of towers that are within two hundred feet of houses. And because of the way that wireless technology works, um, you know, you go back to one G which came out in the nineties, and two G, three G, four G, we're onto five G now. Um, because of the higher, uh, traffic and the, and the more output of data, they don't carry as far anymore. So that's part of the trend of why towers are tending to be more densified in urban areas is, um, you know, twenty years ago, when we were on one G and we were just making phone calls, the antennas and technology might be able to carry ten miles. And now, you know, in an urban area, you probably see a tower every mile or, or more, depending on the number of people that live in an area, so. And yeah, just to build on, on my comments, I guess, last time, I tried to do a little bit more research into, well, where would it be feasible um, with the current zoning ordinances for us to build a tower in Brandon? Um, and like we talked about last time, we, I think as the zoning code sits today, you can only build in industrial and in business commercial, um, zoning jurisdictions. And there's just none that are, are large enough on the south half of town. I'm actually, I, I, I can't say this with a hundred percent definitiveness, but I'm not sure there's any parcels in Brandon that would meet all of the setbacks and the requirements to be able to build a tower today in the city of Brandon. So I'm, I'm, I guess I'm just an advocate for, is there a way that, as you guys are looking at the growth of Brandon um, on the perimeters of your town, certainly to the south, certainly to the east, to allow for, um, carriers to come in and to provide better coverage for your tent, for your residents? And just, I don't know if I gave this background last time, but Verizon's had South Brandon on their build plan for three years and just hasn't been able to, to find a place and hasn't been able to secure a lease to be able to build the tower. So they kind of sent us in as their hail mary to try to figure it out. Happy to answer any questions or take any comments, I suppose.
So just to kinda piggyback off Jonah's comments, so the kind of legal standard by the FCC is that a municipality cannot prohibit or effectively prohibit towers. So we have not, I have not done research, you know, drawing the bubbles where three hundred feet, you know, match up from a residential or anything, but Brandon is a very heavily residentially zoned city, as is most small towns.
And I, I think it'd be in our best interest to, for us to control where they go versus they get some kind of a corridor that says that they can put them in Brandon. So I think it's in our best interest. I will also say that we want to be very thoughtful because I think there's gonna be some pushback if we put it in the wrong spot. So, uh, I think we need to be very conscious of where we put it, uh, where we allow it, but I think we definitely it's in our best interest for us to control where they go, so. I don't know, that doesn't give much answers, but that's where I think.
So if we wanted to be proactive on this, um, what do we need to change?
So generally speaking, the site they have proposed is the, the small kinda, it's not quite a postage stamp, but it's not, it's not a big lot owned by Alliance next to the city's drainage pond on Park and Sioux. So right across from the two schools down there. So what, the problem with that current location is the NRC district does not allow a new tower. It would allow if you hooked equipment onto something pre-existing like the side of the school or, it's what's called a base station. So the, it, there's also the underlying district setback requirement. The tower would not be within the side yards. It, it would be too close to the side yard setback on the lot for NRC. That is, it is within thirty feet of the side yard. It's probably within maybe the setbacks of the rear and the front as well, depending on the size of the lot, but definitely the side, so that's potentially an issue. There is the three hundred feet away from residential. It is two hundred something. So there's that issue. There's, in NRC, the other issue is you can't have more than one principal use type on a lot. If we consider Alliance's stuff to be some manner of public utility, that it already has a principal use, and if you can't have a second one, a tower would be its own principal use. So there would be a couple of things to work through. So, and of course, they all can be, it's just, what's the appetite to do so?
So I was, I was trying to get my arms around this a little bit, Patrick, so we have wireless communication facilities on, on, on an existing support structure base, so like going on a water tower, going on top of of a building, something like that. That is allowed in NRC. We do not allow a tower in NRC.
Correct.
And you, and the current, the current parcel that we're talking about is NRC, is that correct?
Correct.
Well, I guess one, in my mind, one question is, you know, if you're dealing with this specific tower, that would be a re, rezone to some other type of zoning, correct? But are, are we wanting to deal with just this specific one, or as Mike said, look forward and realize that we're probably going to have more towers coming in if they really aren't covering as much territory as they used to be? This isn't probably gonna be our only one. So I don't know which way to, you wanna handle it.
I guess what I, what I'd like to see, and I s- I see it in, saw it in several of these examples, is you know, obviously we need to be a certain distance from, from residential. We have that already. But we also have to have a, a sizable lot that if this tower tips in a high wind event, that it's not gonna, uh, fall on an occupied structure. And so they're, they're gonna take a, a very large parcel of land. Now, do we want only a tower on a large park setting? Is that realistic? No, I don't believe it is. So I think in order to make this work, they're gonna have to be combined with a school, a park, um, some other kind of use. In, in order to make it work, so that we don't have a tower tipping over onto an occupied dwelling or onto a public way. Which I believe, I think every one of the instances you submitted included those kinds of provisions. Setbacks of, you know, at least the height of the tower or one point one times the height of the tower.
This might be an area where Jonah's more of an act, like, very likely, how does a tower fall? Does it fall like a tree would, or does it kind of collapse?
Yeah, towers crumple. It's very rare for them to tip straight over, but because of, you know, the realistic concerns about that, that's why many cities like Sioux Falls say, well, we want it to be at least one point one times the height of the tower from a structure, which, you know, is reasonable, but when towers fall, they don't, they don't just tip over sideways. Typically, they kinda collapse in on themselves, so.
If we're talking a guy-wired tower, I know you're talking about a monopole structure, I can understand.
Correct.
Which is different, but we, there are multiple types of towers. So if a guy wire breaks, you're saying they don't tip?
No, they don't tip straight over. There, there's enough torque and tension from those other guy wires that they will normally twist and then kinda collapse downwards. Um, so it, you know, they, they could, depending on the height of the tower, certainly you wouldn't wanna be within a hundred feet of a falling tower or anything like that, especially with guy wires whipping through the air, but um, be very uncommon for them to just tip straight over. And in this case, uh, the, the tower in question we're talking about is like, like Patrick mentioned, a little over two hundred feet from, from any structure. I guess I don't know exactly the distance from the school across the street, but probably something similar to that.
Well, it looks like we need to do some updating of our ordinances. Can we schedule that for agenda item on a future meeting, next meeting?
Sure.
Is there anyone here that wanted to address this? It's a discussion item, but.
So this is roughly kinda where the proposed tower is, more or less, probably not exactly, you know, quite foot accurate to the wall of the school over there, roughly three ninety-five to four hundred, probably. Over here is quite a ways as well, where you, yeah. So this is probably your, or this house over here, so it's it's.
I think in all of our ordinances, we talk to the property line, not necessarily to the structure.
Yep, just in terms of following. Yep. Just in terms of fall distance work. But yes, so it does talk about, it has to be 300 feet from a residentially zoned or used lot. So you would go from the structure to the lot line, the tower to.
So how far is it to the east property line, which is, is that residential or is that?
So I think the school still down there is residential as well, and that's 117. I don't believe they have rezoned yet. But across the way.
Is that R or is that?
It could be NRC. That's 250 over here would be 316-ish. So it, we'd have to look at this and the school.
Yeah. What I'm showing, everything to the east is still NRC and the south, the school is R1 residential.
Then that would get into the, is it, even though it's not residentially zoned, is it residentially used? Cause this does appear to be a house.
And if, what happens if, you know, if that's a house and then if they sell that house and they develop into residential, do we limit them from being, being residential because there's a tower too close? So we don't want to hinder that property's use.
So the first stage we passed today is that you all seem to be interested in at least working through something. So is there any direction on a draft or anything to start you would like me to work on? Whether it's, do we want to modify NRC? Do we, are these kind of lots where it would mostly pair with a school or a park or potentially another public utility facilities? Stuff as is Alliance. We had, the legal definition was a public utility facility is, is Alliance. I don't know off the top of my head, maybe. Is, is that better suited for institutional? Would you like to look more at commercial, NRC? The issue with that lot, of course, is Alliance would have to be a little bit.
My concern with putting it in NRC is that that's, if, if that's our default for when we annex a property is to put it in NRC. If someone before it got further along, decided to put a tower in while it was still under NRC, so they met all the guidelines, when that wasn't the intent of anyone else, um, as far as planning goes. So I, I, I'd be very hesitant to put it in NRC to encourage that because if that's kind of our go-to. If we put it in institutional, um, my biggest concern is, is the residential aspect, you know, institutional is usually surrounded by residential parks, schools, churches. So we have to be very cautious of how we interact with that. That might be the place to put it, but if we do, we need to have, have some really clear conversations with the, the public so they know that that's what we're talking about. Cause there's going to be some pushback. It's, it's a tricky issue because everyone uses this, but nobody wants it. So it's a, it's a tricky thing and there's going to be pushback, but I don't see how we don't address it.
So, uh, we've, we've got a lot of these issues covered in 1515 seven in terms of distance from residential. So that's already covered. It's just what parcels it goes on. So 1515 seven already talks about, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, how close we can be to residential.
Correct. And is, is the 300 the right number?
Yeah. So you could, you could put it in, you could put it in HI or LI or, or CB or GB, but you still, that could be right next to residential, but it doesn't mean you're still going to be able to put a tower there. You still need to be a distance away from residential, irregardless of what district you're in. I guess in my mind, I, I wouldn't mind seeing this be, be added to institutional, just like it is LI, HI, CB, GB. And then if we can find a way that that isn't the only structure on the parcel. And the reason I say that is it's, it's, it's not really feasible to have a hundred foot tower on a parcel that's, you know, 200 feet by 200 feet, just because we want, we want it to fall and not hit anything else. You just, you just don't see that. You see a, you see them typically associated with other types of entities, churches, schools, office buildings.
Just for the sake of time, how would you feel if I sat down with Jonah and his staff and we came up with a, a first draft and then we will work from there and we'll work towards something that works?
What's the rest of the group up here? What's your thoughts on allowing it as an additional structure? On say, uh, central business parcel? As an ex, as an allowable accessory structure?
Say a lot of them, like you said, are, I mean, when they go places, it seems like they're not the only thing on there. Look at a lot of them. It's not like they zone a lot just for those sitting. That one up north on, uh, is it North Ninth or whatever? Can you pull that up? That's, is that on its own lot or where, how's that sitting? To be honest with you, I didn't even know it was there. I was listening to the video and I looked out my window like, oh, there it is. I've lived there for 11 years. I didn't notice that that tower was there, but.
Most people can't identify the closest tower to their house. They think a lot about it or trying to build them, but once they're there, they generally go unnoticed.
I, it does look like maybe it is on its own lot, but the lot's not, the lot's point one eight acres. So it was, I'm guessing it was probably part of the lot to the west, then it just got subdivided off just for that purpose. But you probably don't have a lot of lots that would work to do that with anymore.
I would agree that the most it's going to be probably necessary or something. We should look at it to be able to have it as a additional use on lots. And I think that looking at the institutional zone as an option too is something we should do. Would it be possible to allow them as an additional structure by a conditional use in our ordinance, Patrick?
The problem comes down with, with terms. We, I don't know if you necessarily want, want to consider a standalone tower as an accessory use because it has to be accessory to something. It has to be related to the other principles. So we would have to be considered a second principal use most likely, because you wouldn't have a, a tower wouldn't be accessory to a restaurant or Marmon or, so that's probably the way to do it. We could have a lot of the districts other than the residential and NRC do allow multiple principal uses on the lot.
Like is, is that where, how you're seeing most of the towers installed? Is that there?
Yeah.
In addition to something that's already on that parcel?
Right. It, it'd be very unusual or you'd, I don't know. I guess there's maybe one example, but to have or buy or purchase a whole lot or lease a whole lot just for a tower, normally would go in a parking lot or next to a building, things like that.
And then what do you, what do you, how does that typically work? You guys have a long-term lease then with the?
Yep. So in this, yeah, in this case, Alliance, uh, I think under a different name, but it's Alliance owns the parcel where they have a fiber shelter on that lot. And we just lease basically a 50 by 30 spot from them and put our own fence around the tower and everything like that. And, um, pretty typical is like a 30-year lease for a tower.
And then that was my next question. What's the typical life expectancy on these towers?
Towers are built to last like a hundred years. So if you take care of them, you know, they're not, they're not going to fall down. And so be there far past any of us unless it was needed to be taken down for any reason.
It's, it will probably be outdated by technology.
Yeah, certainly. Yeah. Yeah, you can structurally modify them and things like that. Weld on additional pieces if it needs to be beefed up, but built to last for sure. So just from my understanding, apologize. So if, if it was being considered as a, an additional use that you could have on uh, institutional district, is it feasible for us to rezone the lot in question to institutional or would it not qualify?
So that, that's also, uh, uh, Alliance would have to rezone the lot. That'd be your first hurdle. Whether they would care or not, I don't know. Then you run into spot zone things, but institutional tends to be a more limited set of uses than other districts. So even though it's not necessarily in the comp plan, kind of the thinking behind rezoning, it would be kind of like we do with schools and churches anyway, that this was a district written for that. Institutional probably makes sense for whatever Alliance has going on in that building. And it would be potentially eventually right across the road from a school that ideally would be institutional. So it might not necessarily have spot zoning concerns ultimately long-term. So it might, it would work, certainly work better than if we were to rezone that to commercial or industrial in the middle of nothing else similar.
You could even talk to the city and rezone the school at the same time.
As far as I know, Dr. Larson is seemingly open to the rezoning of the schools, but we'd have to talk to him for sure.
Cause right now I, I think as I understand it, that the institutional lots are like Aspen Park and the golf course, McCarty Park, McCarty Park.
Is this, is the city going to rezone their property institutional there or is that going to stay NRC?
Eventually it is the goal to have all of our properties rezoned to institutional. That would be a detention pond. So yes, the, ultimately the plan is to rezone all of that to institutional because the city owns it. There's not much more you can do with it. If it's just a place that holds water, you can't really develop it for any reason. So the other issue with institutional that Paul mentioned that we might also have to consider is that we do have a minimum lot size for institutional that may not necessarily make sense. It makes sense for a park probably unless it's from any small neighborhood parks. And we do have some that are smaller than an acre, but not all institutional probably warrants an acre lot. Shouldn't. I don't know. That might be something we have to revisit the minimum lot size in institutional. I get where you wouldn't want a church being on probably just, I don't know, just various random things in institutional on a tiny lot, but maybe the minimum lot size doesn't necessarily work for everything in institutional, since that would be, maybe you would have a detention pond that would only be half an acre. I don't know. But that might be a future consideration as well to fix that.
What are, I think they're institutional, but what are substations usually zoned? Like the, on Split Rock and Redwood, there's a.
Yep. So there is one on Split Rock and Redwood. There's one up in kind of on the northern end of what would have, what would be the Brandon Industrial Park and north of it being Roe Vang. East Ri- East River owns one by Casey's. Even though you drive by, you'll kind of never see it unless you think of it. So they own one there. Most of those I think are heavy industrial currently. And does it make sense that those are heavy industrials? Should those be institutional as well? I don't know. We'll have to work. I don't, I don't know if East River would necessarily care all that much. I'm sure they'd want to be involved in the process.
I think if we're, we're putting parks in institutional, I guess my, my concern with putting like a substation in institutional, the same thing. It's kind of like, oh, they're going to put a park in there and then all of a sudden it's a substation, you know? So I think in, uh, heavy industrial is probably fine for a substation. It tells people if something's going to go there. Does, uh, what, what are the lot requirements for size requirements for heavy industrial? Do they, they allow towers, I assume? That's where the.
Heavy industrial, I believe would. So we will look it up. Went all the way to institutional. Heavy industrial has, there is no minimum lot area. There is a minimum lot width for contractor shops is 37 and a half, but everything else is 75 feet for a minimum lot width. And they have your standard heavy industrial side yard, front yard setback, front yard 25, side and rear 10.
Would that Alliance lot potentially work as heavy industrials or?
We would have to, uh, I'd, we'd have to measure it out, see if they have 75 feet of width. That'd probably be their big sticking point, whether they could meet the 25, 10, 10, maybe they could.
What's the minimum lot size for industrial or institutional currently?
An acre.
An acre. Cause I noticed that there's a park over off of, uh, let's see, West Stone Street, the city owns. It's three quarters of an acre, but currently seems to be zoned as institutional.
Stone Ridge Park up there. Let's see if we can get 75 out of this thing. Yeah, yeah. Comes out to be about 93-ish. Assuming this might be off, you know, five to 10, but seems like it did clear 75.
And the, the reason why I'm thinking this way is if we, if we rezone something heavy industrial, we're putting notice out there that something's going to happen, you know? So I don't know if that's the way to go or not. Uh, my, my concern with going with the institutional is that's what we're putting schools and parks and, and the park thing is what concerns me because there's already been questions about whether we need to have a second zone for parks because that's a, a lighter use than other things. And if, if we are telling people that it's just going to be a park and all of a sudden it's a park with a tower, I just, I, I think there could be some pushback, but heavy industrial is telling people that there's something going to happen there. So if we rezoned it to heavy industrial, like we do with substations and put a tower there, I'm wondering if that would work.
The, the public concern with rezoning something to heavy industrial is would be everything that zone could unlock. Say the tower falls through, you could have.
Everything. Yes. Yeah. I understand.
Plus it'd be spot, sub, spot zoning too, wouldn't it?
If, uh, if we have these things like substations and, and, um, utilities, utility structures, towers, um, I don't think, I don't think spot zoning, heavy industrial is, is the right application to do it. Would it be easier to do it as a subsection within institutional? But have different lot requirements for that use? Lot size requirements. So we could, we could have it as, as an institutional, but we don't necessarily need a half acre. We could have a a smaller parcel size, you know, just like we do for other districts. We have different parcel sizes, minimum parcel sizes.
We could conceptually have an institutional district one for more traditional uses and an institutional two as those smaller support facilities that just kind of blend into the background, like Alliance's building or. There are a couple of ways to approach it. So however, you all suggest we can write up a draft and it, see what works and what doesn't and modify and.
But then maybe, um, based on the park question, if you're going to have different subcategories, maybe you would have a subcategory just for parks to protect that.
That's the fun thing about zoning is you can pretty much write it as you want it. You could be like the city of Sioux Falls and have 70. seventy ish zoning districts that each do slightly different things. So there's a lot of ways to do it. We could add a district. We could modify a district. It's what? As a staff level at this point, where we are early in the discussion, we're more just looking for that you all wanna find a solution and kind of a a very high view of what direction you kind of want it to look like. So then we can hammer out some details and discuss.
Jonah, if this thing gets built, it's not gonna be in a day. That's for sure.
No, no. Probably, we probably, you know, if if we when you're guys' approval, we'd be looking at building it uh, probably in September or October of twenty twenty five.
Okay. Do you have enough to go on, Patrick?
I think so. Would are you all fine if staff works with Jonah and his team to kind of come up with a first draft and we'll dissect it and mold it and remold it and break the mold and start again and try to come up with something? Okay.
Yep.
Thanks for coming, Jonah.
Thanks so much.
Okay, R two zoning district revisions?
Would it be possible for us to uh, we'd need a motion to alter the agenda, but since we do have a member in the audience here for the last item.
Oh, is that what you're here for? Sure. Yeah, sure. Yeah, come on up.
Could we get a motion then to amend the agenda to have twelve replace eleven, I think it is, and just flop them?
Totes so moved. Second, no.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Okay. Sorry, I wasn't sure what you were here for. Come on up. I kept trying to get you to come up. Okay, come on up. And just give us your name and address, please. And push that little button.
Ann Peterson and I am from Garrettson. And I own Annie's Coffee Shop in Garrettson. And I'm wishing to move it to Brandon. And the location I'm wanting to move it to is the Sioux Marble Building and it is currently zoned. Patrick, um.
Heavy industrial.
There you go. Which is does not allow beer and wine. And so I would like to serve beer and wine.
Of course, the issue with a rezone to commercial is that Sioux Marble is an industrial use and that would make them a non-conforming use.
So this would be in the same building, Sioux Marble would still stay there. You would be with with.
Correct, correct.
Do you know if there are any other businesses in that building besides Sioux Marble?
So the one in the middle was the one that was growing marijuana. But they're closed. And so I'm gonna take over that one too.
Two, two pieces, yeah. I thought there was something else in there. I couldn't remember what it was.
At one point there was a massage slash, I think, in the third part of that.
Right, right. Yep.
Be nice to get that filled in.
That's my goal.
Kind of our conversation to you would be, is this something you're interested in doing? And if so, how do we it would you like to caveat it in some way? It has to be in conjunction with a retail business or you you probably wouldn't want one of our big industrial operations, you know, setting up kind of a alcohol store, you know, your employees get done with your twelve hour shift, you know, pick up a a a case on the way out.
So the so the what I'm hearing is that most, most other aspects of the business would be allowable even in this zone. It's that that's the main.
Correct. Retail, general retail is allowed in heavy industrial. It's just not, the alcohol sales component is currently not. Whether on sale, off sale, any, it's not.
Generally, my concern starts with why isn't it allowed and think, well, if we can't think of anything, maybe we should allow it. But my concern is like Patrick said, if we allow liquor sales in heavy industrial, does that open a door to something that we don't want? This is this situation might be fine. That's my, that's my concern. So I just, that's where we're we're starting at is what are we opening our door to that we're not thinking about? Yeah, I guess do we want a bar opening up in our light and heavy industrial parks?
So could you make it somehow that it's, I don't know, a certain percent of sales or some sort of condition that that way or it's tied to? I don't know how you would define retail business, but.
If you can, I don't know if you can link it to, like you said, food somehow. If it, if they sell food as a, what do you call it, retail?
Some some of our large industrial employers do have quite large kind of food areas for their employees. Marmon has quite the setup of vending machines and other things in there.
What I would say is that's your main, not, you're not building towers. And then, oh, we do have food. That would be your your business, not towers.
So that would probably, so this kind of takes back to some definitions that come from adult uses where you have to define what is predo- the predominant use of the lot. So we would have to, is it fifty percent? Is it, you know, fifty one, fifty point one? Does that make you a predominant use? Is it based on your sales? We would probably have to come up with some solid definition of the predominant use of the lot.
Cause I think there's something in the liquor license that ties back to food sales. I think if I dredging that up someplace.
I don't know what the percentage is, but you have to sell so much food.
For.
To qualify for the liquor sales. Yeah. It's an eighty, twenty or something like that.
We could find that language and just mirror it.
I know when this is kind of off, it's kind of the same subject, but not. I know when two twelve came, that was the big issue. I know everyone was so worried there was just gonna be alcohol. Well, it's mainly food now. I mean, they sell alcohol, but it's mainly food. Again, we're back on Split Rock and that should be general business. Yeah, I I'm, I'm okay with this. I just don't want I, as long as it becomes subsequent to the to a primary function, I don't, I don't want us to start allowing um, bars and restaurants in our light and heavy industrial districts. But if this, you know, alcohol sales is subsequent to another primary function, I'm okay with that.
I I agree. The thing is, is in order to allow it, we're gonna have to change our ordinances somehow. So you have, you've listened to the talk we've had so far. There's a lot of picky wording things that we have to take into consideration. How soon do you think you'd be coming over? Supposed to, oh, not till March. I'm s- yeah. Okay.
And what, what is your business? What is that?
The name of it?
Wh- what is it? What do you do? Like, do you sell food or what?
Yeah, it's coffee shop, but I do lunches and Friday nights I do flatbreads and other specials and Saturdays lunches and then sometimes I do a Sunday brunch and.
So where are you adding Garrettson? Are you in the old?
I have moved down to, so if you know where the elevator is, so it's right across the street from the elevator. In the back of the old bowling alley. Yeah.
I I go over there sometimes just for the sentiment.
I was gonna bring you somebody. You said I can't bribe you, so.
Well, no, you're not allowed to bribe me. But if I'd known you were coming tonight, I'd oh, you know, ask you to bring a order that I would have paid for.
Okay, so we wanna see what we can do with that? Do we have some direction for Patrick? He's gonna be a busy guy.
It seemed to be in conjunction with some kind of food or other businesses, not pure industrial. And we'll figure out some language. We'll come back. The process takes at best probably ninety days. So if you're looking at March, we're probably right up on there, but.
I'm assuming whatever we do here, we would also incorporate into the light industrial.
I imagine so. You would think if if it makes sense for heavy, it would make sense for light.
Anything else? Thanks so much for your patience sitting there. I'm sorry I could have, I could have pulled you in a lot sooner. So I apologize.
No, it was interesting.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. All right, now going back to R two zoning district revisions, page eighty.
So we had a builder apply to do some twin homes? A duplex and what we came across in R two. And it I think it's something we've talked about before when you talked about changes we need to make to the R districts generally. Right now, if you look at the way things are worded for single family attached, you have, it says zero or ten on non-party wall side. The exception here should probably read six instead of five because the exception technically allows you to go from ten to seven if you're next to an R one rather than get larger as is normally the case. So this is, it's likely an error where where it should be a six instead of a five. Because multifamily would get bigger, but so that's kind of an issue that we may need to fix. Unless that's how it was intended, but it seems like generally the trend is not to have an R two next to an R one and have a decreased setback between the two.
I think it's just administrative cleanup.
Clean up a possible typo.
So, yeah, and I and I highlighted some numbers in the packet. If you can have a single family detached with a five foot side yard setback, would you want the same five on a single family attached? Does it make sense to treat them? Require the one to have somewhere between three to five on each side more. If it's attached, then detached. Detached is five, single family attached currently is ten.
Well, if you go to R one, which is kind of an even more open setting, single family attached two on two lots is zero and seven feet on the non-party wall side. So to me, we should not be more restrictive in a higher density application. So should on her single family attached two on two lots, shouldn't that be zero, zero or five? And then the exception be seven if it's adjacent to R one. Cause then it, then it would be equivalent to the adjacent, the the setback would be equivalent to the adjacent R one district. Does that make sense? Yes. Is that what you were trying to say, Patrick?
Yes.
Okay. I thought we did this.
We had talked about it when we were doing, where you talked about the R district regulations generally. Now we've come upon it.
So I think for the single family attached two on two and single family attached two on one, to me those should be zero or five. And then the exception should be seven, seven feet.
Correct. So in that case, the exception number five would read correctly. We would just change the tens to fives.
Yes. But then I think the next two are correct, aren't they? Or if you get into an apartment type application, it's a ten foot um, the side yard unless it's R one, then you go to fifteen. I think that's written correctly.
Correct. Currently it is, yeah, the ten would go to fifteen. So, yeah, it's just the the single family attached that was a little off.
So does that have to go through the whole ordinance process or?
It does.
It does. Okay, the clock's ticking then, I guess.
So just to summarize, we, instead of zero or ten, it would be zero or five. The five would be correct then because it would up it to seven next to an R one. We will come back. At this point, maybe we can try the second meeting in December, but with the way it works, it'll might be January.
Okay, anything else for the good of the cause? Now I'll take a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Okay, we are done.
We are adjourned at seven fifty seven PM.